Yeah. Okay.
Video or record? Yeah?
Yep, I got, I got it recorded.
Okay.
Okay, back to business. First item is the minutes from the Operations Committee from November. Any questions, comments? First item of business is approval of a purchase of furniture from the Building and Repair Fund. I think previously Nancy's talked about how we're reconfiguring office space over in the H Kick with the Computer Lab. And this is a purchase of furniture for the, they're not tech assistants. What are Joe and Jackie and Anne? They are?
Well, it's for the Office of the H Kick staff.
Okay.
Including Heather's and the rest of the staff. We're moving them up. Right, we're moving them up from the floor in the H Kick up into what used to be the boardroom. Because they have a growing staff and they were running out of room in their area.
Any questions, concerns? Next item is our approval of our insurance premium. The annual premium for the, for the property casualty and liability is forty eight thousand zero zero nine. That is a net increase of three thousand one hundred thirty-three from last year. And the cyber insurance is three thousand nine oh one, and that's gone up by five hundred and sixty-nine dollars. More of the increase on our property is just because our values have gone up. And the computer equipment, we've increased our computers and that, so. I, I think that's a pretty fair, and we're part of the Ohio Plan, which is a consortium of cities and counties and some schools and other libraries, so I think this is a pretty fair premium. Anyone have any questions? Next item is a tax advance resolution that I have to certify this to the County Auditor, which allows them to give us money in advance of the final settlement right now. They've got tax advances scheduled for January and February with the settlement in March, so this will cover us for it. Any questions? Next item is an amendment to this year's budget. At the November meeting, we approved the 2021 budget. Basically, what we're changing here is at the beginning of the year, we appropriate money in anticipation of getting grants, donations and the like, and what we're doing is decreasing three of the grant funds, and then the Bauer money is what we use for staff development. And we didn't send people to national conferences or even statewide conferences this year. There were a lot of expenses. Anybody that went to any conferences, they were all virtual, so. Because we aren't spending that money, I need to decrease those funds appropriation or budgets and send it to the County Auditor. Next item is Personnel Committee. Any questions or comments on the minutes? Okay, we have three different policy approvals, a temporary sick leave, a critical leave, and exposure contagious diseases. Nancy, do you want to run through what those are?
Sure, I did explain each one separately when I sent them to you, but basically the critical leave policy is a permanent policy change. It was a policy that we passed in March at the beginning of COVID. Because it was sort of a one size fits all, and we have modified it so that we can use it in the case of any disaster that gives the library director the power to close or give a critical leave for two weeks. And then after that, we will have had to have a resolution from the Board. And I was very anxious to have that power curtailed so that we would have to circle back and get Board approval for any extended closure for, for COVID or for any other disaster, just so no one could say that the director was acting independently and, you know, without, without power. Just to, to make sure we're always going to have Board approval for anything longer than two weeks. And then the temporary leave policy is only for COVID. It is only in effect until the end of June, I believe. It's either June first or June thirtieth. And this was to allow us to continue leaves of absence for people due to COVID, failing the extension of a federal cares act or leave act. And we don't know what they're going to do, so we had to have something because we've got people in the middle of leave right now, and it will carry over into 2021, and we didn't want to leave them high and dry. So now the staff knows that they may each have two different twelve-week periods that have different pay criteria, and they also have, for the people who don't want to do something that big, there is a schedule change option. If it only affects one-fifth of the time that you work, we can adjust your schedule to allow you to have a different childcare possibility without having to mess up your job or leave your job. So we're trying to be family-friendly while still keeping limits on how much we can do. And then we feel like this is a good middle-of-the-road kind of thing, and the purpose of the leave is to give families a chance to regroup and find another alternative. It's not meant to carry them through the whole COVID school closure or remote learning without making a change. It just could allow them time to hire someone or bring grandma in or do whatever they have to do to make it possible for them to work and have their children taken care of.
Any questions, concerns?
I'll just add that it's important. I know a lot of workplaces aren't doing anything like this, and a lot of people are struggling, so I think.
I would commend Lori because she spent, she did the lion's share of this. And we went back and forth with our attorney at Han Losher about six times. You know, hammering it out, hammering it out, asking questions, making it work. So she really spent, you know, and especially knowing that it could go away because the feds finally do something. She really, really thought carefully about what the staff needed, and Debbie and I were just consulting at some point, so. It, it was really Lori's thing, and she was very.
I have a concern on the one, on a contagious disease, exposure to contagious disease.
Yes.
In, in section B, it says the director may remove or reassign an infected or et cetera. But it's the end of the sentence that I felt was questionable.
Can you read it to me because I don't have.
The director may remove or reassign an infected or contagious employee or coworker if a secondary infection would pose a higher-than-usual risk. Those last four words are the ones that I felt kind of put you in a bad position. Who decides the higher-than-usual risk?
I think that may not be COVID-related. It may be anything because we, this contagious disease policy has been in our HR manual forever. And it was, it was originally started because of pink eye. And so if someone had a rash or something that they refused to acknowledge, this would allow the director to ask them to work. I wouldn't remove them bodily. I would just separate.
I didn't think so. You're, you're putting them in a more isolated area, right?
Yeah.
As we do with COVID, we're talking about six feet away from a coworker, right? So that's why.
It's more about physical spacing than removing. I think removing is the word that's. I think we could change that word to isolate or something like that.
Because I, I just felt that an employee could question it. That, that's really what I thought, like. The, the last four words, is that under their discretion, your discretion, their doctor's discretion, et cetera? And this is what we're dealing with right now, so even though we may have had them on the books or whatever, this very specific thing. So, and Max and Jim, I know you guys.
We'll change it to the director may remove, comma, reassign, or isolate.
Yeah.
An infected or contagious employee. Does that sound good?
Or maybe a, a more isolated area. Because you, you don't want to be mean, like you're not isolating them. They just need to be in an isolated area to continue to work.
Okay.
Does anybody want to chime in? I mean, what is someone else's thoughts on that?
You caught it, Dana.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure.
Thank you.
Okay, everybody else okay? Next item is a renewal of vision.
Sorry, I'm, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I'm going back. Are we done with the policies, the new policies?
Yes.
So my question, my, my, my question on all of them, Nancy, was do we have appeal rights baked into our policy somewhere? Some of the, some of these are discretionary, and I can see how someone might want to appeal a denial, for instance.
We do. We have a complaint policy. It probably shouldn't be called complaint, but in the HR manual, if you disagree with anything, you have a way to bring your complaint to your, first your supervisor, then the HR manager, then the director, you know.
Okay.
Yes.
I think it's important because some of these are significant new policies, so. And, and they do, and they do involve some judgment calls, so you may have some people unhappy with how it turns out. That's, you answered my question, though. Thank you.
Anybody else? Okay, next item is vision. It is being renewed with no premium increase, which is always a nice thing, and it's for twenty-four months rather than just twelve. And then also the life insurance policy is being renewed for just one year, but that's also at no increase. Planning and relations. We have minutes from the last committee meeting. Any comments or corrections? And then the only real item attached to this is the planning calendar for next year, just for everyone to take a gander at, to see what we're looking to do to schedule meetings for 2021, and if anyone has any problems, let us know in December, and it'll be on the January fourth committee agenda with our new board member to review, and then we will adopt it at the, the January meeting. Okay. Any other questions or concerns? If not, we'll roll into a regular board meeting agenda. Let's see. I'll call the meeting to order, Ms. Carlisle.
Yes, here.
Ms. Crenshaw.
Yes.
Ms. Flowellin.
Yes.
Mr. Gerbach.
Here.
Ms. Iwamoto.
Here.
Mr. Russo. Mr. Toracchio.
Here.
I certify that the notification of this meeting of the Library Trustee, Board of Trustees meeting has been made. I have attached the minutes of the November sixteenth regular meeting. Anyone find any corrections or comments? If not, I'll entertain a motion to approve.
Motion.
Second.
A second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Anyone opposed? The next item we have is recognition of a board member. Ms. Levin, would you like to read for the record? Our recognition here.
This board member is Jim Russo, and I'll try to get through this without getting sad. Whereas James K. Russo was appointed to the Board of Library Trustees of the Cleveland Heights, University Heights Public Library in November two thousand and ten to fill a three-year partial term and was reappointed in two thousand and thirteen. A seven-year term. And whereas he served as a member of the Planning and External Relations Committee, the Operations Committee, and the Personnel Committee. And whereas he was Chair of the Planning and External Relations Committee and Chair of the Operations Committee and Chair of the Personnel Committee. And whereas he served as Board Secretary in two thousand and eighteen, Vice President in two thousand and twelve and in two thousand and nineteen, and President of the Board in two thousand and thirteen and two thousand and twenty. And whereas he was key to the successful passage of the two thousand and fourteen levy. And whereas he was an advocate for the purchase of the Coventry Peace Park and building and its continued stewardship. And whereas his leadership during a global pandemic provided a steady hand and a caring heart felt by the staff and the community. And whereas he led the library to be a voice for the citizens in seeking racial equity and celebrating diversity of all kinds. And whereas he recognized the importance of community engagement and responsiveness, which was aptly demonstrated in our strategic planning processes. And whereas he was instrumental in planning and renovations of the University Heights branch. And whereas he understood the value of an independent public library system to our communities. And whereas he demonstrated unflappable leadership, a warm sense of humor, and calm administration of board duties, including efficiently running meetings. And whereas during his term of service, Heights Libraries continued to achieve superior rankings in the Library Journal Index, proving the Heights Libraries to be a national leader. Now therefore be it resolved that this resolution of tribute be spread upon the minutes.
Do I have a motion? Do I have a motion to approve the resolution?
A motion.
I'll say. I'll second that.
Thank you. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 No one's opposed. Mr. Russo, would you like to say a few words?
Well, I said some before we got started, but, you know, I've, I've seen a lot of board makeup over the last ten years, and as I said earlier, this is a working, this is a working board, unlike a lot of boards of institutions this size with this size budget. We actually have to do a lot of work, and it's great for all of us. I think it makes us stronger leaders and stronger trustees to get, get our hands, you know, dirty and do all the work. It also is a huge time commitment, and I really admire everybody for showing up as they always do and to contribute so productively, and, you know, this is a great board that I'm leaving behind. You guys are all young, and you're energetic, and you all have great things ahead of you, whether it's on this board or somewhere else. And I'm, I'm really, really happy to have been a part of, of the last ten years and work that touched all four of the branches. And I, I must say, and you can probably guess, this last year has been the most intense for being a board member in the library's history, probably. And, you know, you all have been there for it, so this is something that we'll tell stories about for years. I'm just so, so proud of the work that the board has done. Thank you.
Thank you, Jim. It has been a pleasure serving with you for the past ten years, and don't be a stranger. We'll, we'll keep you involved one way or another.
We will. Thank you.
Good care.
I'm gonna hang around.
Okay, at least for this meeting.
Yeah.
As we move through the agenda.
Real quick, before you move on.
Okay, go ahead, ma'am.
Because we were doing it in the other, but it should be on the public for all of the effort.
It'll be posted tomorrow.
Yeah, Jim, you've been fantastic. I mean, you, your leadership is invaluable. We hate to see you go. I love the way you do your thing. It was good knowing you personally. We would run into each other at the high school sometime when your youngest child was still there. And I sincerely can't thank you enough for your card and condolences when my mother passed away. So I just want to say it's been a pleasure.
Thank you. All right, get on with business, y'all.
Want to get done? If Mr. Russo is still with us, the tradition is he gets to move to adjourn his final meeting. As we move, as we move through the agenda, because the month of November just ended last week, there are no reports from anyone, financial, government, director, public service, and those will all be presented to the Board in January. First item to approve is the amended permanent appropriation, which has all of the grant monies that we were zeroing out since we didn't receive any grants. Do I have a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Do I have a second?
A second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposition? Next item is approval of a tax advance to request the County Auditor send us our portion of the taxes collected prior to the final settlement in, in September and March. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Anyone opposed? Oh, I should really be doing roll call. I'll do that on the next one. I'm sorry. Trying to keep going. Approval of furniture. We've reviewed an invoice or an estimate for eleven thousand eight oh four from the Building and Repair Fund to purchase furniture for the H Kick staff. Do I have a motion?
A motion.
Second. Mr. Russo. Ms. Carlisle.
Yes.
Ms. Crenshaw.
Yes.
Ms. Flowellin.
Yes.
Mr. Gerbach.
Yes.
Ms. Iwamoto.
Yes.
Mr. Russo.
Yes.
Mr. Toracchio.
Yes.
Next item is approval of property liability and cyber insurance from December first, two thousand and twenty to November twenty-first of two thousand and twenty-one. No significant increases. The liability insurance is up by three thousand one thirty-three. The cyber insurance is up by five sixty-nine. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Mr. Toracchio, do I have a second?
I'll say.
No questions? Call the roll. Ms. Carlisle.
Yes.
Ms. Crenshaw.
Yes.
Ms. Flowellin.
Yes.
Mr. Gerbach.
Yes.
Ms. Iwamoto.
Yes.
Mr. Russo.
Yes.
Mr. Toracchio.
Yes.
Jim, may I just intercede here? The cyber insurance is for our personal, our library, and mostly has to do with our bank transfers. Our cyber insurance, which involves email and passage of information over the web, is covered by Cleveland.
That is correct.
Okay.
Next item is approval of the policies, exposure to contagious disease, temporary sick leave policy, and critical leave and pay. Does anyone have any further comments or questions on the items? With the changes that Ms. Flowellin recommended on the contagious disease, we'll incorporate that into the final policy, which will be attached to the minutes of this meeting. Do I have a motion?
A motion.
Second.
A second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Anyone opposed? Next item is the renewal of vision coverage for next year with no increase in the premium from this year. Do I have a motion? Mr. Russo, do I have a second?
Second.
Ms. Toracchio. No further questions? I'll call the roll. Ms. Carlisle.
Oh, sorry, yes.
Ms. Crenshaw.
Yes.
Ms. Flowellin.
Yes.
Mr. Gerbach.
Yes.
Ms. Iwamoto.
Yes.
Mr. Russo.
Yes.
Mr. Toracchio.
Yes.
Next item is the renewal of the life and accidental death and dismemberment policy at no increase from the current rate. Any questions? Do I have a motion?
A motion.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Ms. Carlisle. Any questions? Call the roll. Ms. Carlisle.
Yes.
Ms. Crenshaw.
Yes.
Ms. Flowellin.
Yes.
Mr. Gerbach.
Yes.
Ms. Iwamoto.
Yes.
Mr. Russo.
Yes.
Mr. Toracchio.
Yes.
Anyone have anything? You don't, we have, at the last meeting, we announced that the Friends have started the five-dollar Friday bag sale. I don't think there's anything else currently new from the Friends. Anything else to add, Mr. Russo, or did you have your say at the beginning of the meeting?
I had my say, thank you.
Okay. Nancy, anything to add?
You will receive in your post today that we were once again chosen to be a five-star library by Library Journal for the two thousand and eighteen. It's two years. Goes on data from two years ago. We're very pleased. It's always nice when it happens. And if you read the article associated with it, they also pointed out that the state of Ohio is very good at collecting statistics, and they called us up as a model for other states, which was always nice. We were only beat out by New York State with more star libraries than the state of Ohio. And I always want to advocate for the fact that while, you know, certainly there are levies involved and local support involved, we have a gem here that's worth defending and, and keeping for future generations, so I hope that, that Ohio libraries continue to be one of the strongest in the country.
There is no six-star rating, is there, Nancy? Five's the top.
No. Only, only in our hearts.
Kim, do you have any news on anything with public service you'd like to chime in, even though you don't have a written report?
No, no.
I, I don't think so. I think everybody's aware that since we're close to the public, our services have reverted back to curbside delivery of materials to customers, phone reference, and of course, the continuation of virtual programs, mostly in the form of storytimes for children, but also we do have a few adult book clubs that go on a weekly yoga session. So really, we've had to, had to scale back, which is disappointing but necessary during these times. And as Debbie mentioned, I will have the November and December public service report combined to share with you during the month of January. And, and Jim, I will also miss you. I'll have that go on the record. I started a little over nine years ago, and you've always been on the board, so it's going to be a real change for me not to see you two Mondays a week. But yes.
You know what? I have an idea. We can get one of those cardboard cutouts that they have at the football game. We can have Jim just right over our shoulders, like.
What you've always dreamed of.
All right. We don't have any unfinished business. Any board members have anything to bring up as new business?
I just want to say real quick, and so I, I always have a million things coming in and out of the library. And the, the curbside pickup, I just wanted to say that the staff has been doing an excellent job handling that. You know, there, there are days when I go and I'm the only one there, but last time I went to, and I always go to the Noble Branch. And last time I was there, there was like a line of people waiting for stuff, and people had to be patient, and, you know, the, the, the customers were great. But the staff that are, just did an excellent job as well, so just wanted to shout them out and say that they're doing a great job under the circumstances.
I agree.
Thank you for stating that, Max, and if you don't mind, I will share that with the staff, because a lot of times, especially during COVID, they don't get to hear those kind of compliments. They're putting things in people's trunks and not really talking to customers. And I, I would love to share that compliment with them.
Absolutely.
Okay.
Besides COVID, once the sun started going down at five o'clock, we had to scramble to get, you know, lights to assist people and, you know, tents and things like that, so. I would say if there's one word we've learned to do this year, it has been to be flexible in everything, right?
The staff has been fantastic.
Yeah.
Nancy, can you give us a quick update on the new members? Is the information meeting next?
Sure. We could have our information meeting. And the interviews for trustee candidates will be held on Tuesday, December fifteenth over Zoom by the school board, and the candidates have received their time slots. And it's going to go very late. It will go till probably eleven PM or so. So no one will be notified until the following day, but. So no one will be notified until the following day, but the school board is going to pick someone that evening.
And we can attend?
Pardon me?
We can attend as we did previously.
We can only, we can watch on.
Zoom.
Zoom, yeah. So can you send us the information when it's available?
Yes, I will.
Thank you.
I think they post it live on their YouTube channel too, because they've got more technology people available. So I, I've looked at one when they did some financial presentations, and they do it on YouTube also.
Okay, I will send it to you as, she should be sending it to me tomorrow, actually, so we will do that. And um, I don't know, just one more thing, uh, all of the admin staff are out of our offices. They're replacing the carpet. So we're little nomads running around parking in different places in the library, so we may be hard to reach for a couple of days. And I suggest you use email. We're not near our phones. Okay.
Anything else for the good of the order? Do you have a motion to adjourn?
I get to make that.
Yes. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
A fine farewell. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed?
Only the Jim leaving, only the Jim leaving.
Yes.
All right, thank you.
All right. Thank you very much. You all have a good holiday season.